All right, so next we are going to cover our council rules of procedure. This is a very important resolution. We're going to do that before lunch. We're going to break for lunch and then we are going to go through our legislative process. And the clerk's team, Clerk Reed, will help lead us through that process. Before we get started and as we walk through some of the key elements of our council rules, this is probably going to be a lot of information. I don't want to be talking at you for the next period. So I may ask some of you to read what's on the slide. I may ask some of you to explain in your own words what certain rules are. So maybe that will help keep you on your toes, but I'd like this to be more than me talking at you. And for this particular one, maybe we'll change it up and take any questions or comments as we go over particular rules so that we don't sort of lose track of things. Let's go on to our next slide. Okay, so our council rules of procedure under Charter Section 210 mandates that we establish rules of procedure for the conduct of our meetings and the order of business. One of the last major updates to our rules of procedure was in 2018, and you'll see that was through Resolution Number 87044. When COVID hit, there was a need because the way that our meetings were conducted changed for health and safety reasons. So during COVID, we adopted temporary rules of procedure and we amended our rules three times in 2020 and 2022. And you'll see on the screen that there were three resolutions that relate to our temporary rules. And in addition, one of the other recent changes we made to our rules was in 2021, when Vice Mayor or Councilmember Kaplan brought forward an amendment to discuss and provide guidance around high-stakes negotiations. And when we get to that particular rule, Councilmember Kaplan, I'm going to ask you to explain that one. Next slide. So just a quick overview on our council rules of procedure. Before I read this, I'll just note when I became a council member and I started four years ago, at that point, the City Attorney's Office did one-on-one briefings with council members to go through these rules and some other topics. So I'm sure they will be available to assist any council members that have legal questions about our rules. And of course, the City Attorney's Office serves as our meeting parliamentarian. So some of the key things our rules cover are establishing the place and time of our regular meetings, establishing committees, their powers and procedures, creating the positions of council president and president pro tempore, establishing procedures at our council meetings, establishing the mayor's powers during council recess. Our rules specifically require council approval of contracts by resolution or ordinance. And then finally, our rules establish a code of conduct for council members as well as a censure policy and procedure. Next slide. So I do want to highlight again that at the Rules and Legislation Committee on January 19th, we will be discussing amending and reinstating our rules. I worked on drafting that with a lot of input over the past couple of years really from you all as well as the public and in partnership with the City Attorney's Office and with input from the clerk and the administrator. So those amendments were published last Friday. Again, we'll discuss them at Rules on the 19th. And as we go through this, there are certain rules that are underlined that are the proposed amendments to the rules that we will be discussing on the 19th. So Rule 1, I think most of the council members are very familiar with this. We conduct our meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Procedure, except where we modify those procedures in our rules document and also as we comply with open meeting laws like the Brown Act and the Sunshine Act. Fourth, our Rule Number 4 relates to our standing committees and our meeting times. And so under the current rules that we have, the temporary rules, our committees meet on the second and fourth Mondays and Tuesdays. And one thing I do want to highlight is that prior to COVID, the majority of our committee meetings happened on the second and fourth Tuesday. And so we had a whole schedule from 9:30 into the evening of having five of our standing committees on Tuesdays. And the proposed rules that we are going to look at in a couple of weeks are going to propose going back to that schedule where we have five meetings on Tuesdays. And then we, not on every Tuesday, but the second and fourth Tuesday, and then we maintain our rules committee on Thursday. And then Rule Number 5 lays out actions by committees, and we'll go through this when we go into the next session after lunch around our legislative process. And so feel free to raise your hand if you have questions and comments now, or we can take them afterwards. Next slide. Rule 6 pertains to the election of the council president, their powers and duties. Rule 7 pertains to the order of business at council meetings. And then Rule 8 pertains to actions and procedures at city council. And so I'll highlight here that under our temporary rules during COVID, our regular meetings are on the first and third Tuesday, and we have been starting earlier at 1:30, and we have also obviously been conducting our meetings by Zoom. And in our proposed rules, the regular council meetings would still be on the first and third Tuesday, but we would start a little bit later to allow more participation from the public, and we would go back into the council chamber. It is mandated by state law that we go back into in-person meetings by March 1st. So we would go back into the council chamber, and we would also have hybrid meetings so that the public would have the option of participating either in person or by Zoom. And the proposal is also that the non-consent items, which tend to be the items that we want more input on, those would not be heard earlier than 5:00 PM. And then Rule 11. This is a current rule, no changes to this one. And this basically says that there's a 10-minute limit on council members speaking on any particular item. Councilmember Ramachandran.
Um, President Bass, is the 10-minute limit cumulative or 10 minutes for every comment?
It is cumulative. And so this pertains especially to our non-consent calendar, where a council member might wish to share some initial comments and speak for two minutes, and they may comment again and provide some discussion or questions. So it's cumulative. You know, I will say it's a little bit hard to track by the clerk's team or by me. And so we do try to be as brief as we can, and we start by having a two-minute timer. So we're, you know, self-aware of how long we're speaking. Councilmember Kalb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to the comment from Councilmember Ramachandran. Usually, if I recall, we've had a time limit for items that would come from the administration or from other council members. But if the council member, him or herself, is the sponsor and presenter of an item, then they might need more than 10 minutes to do the full presentation and back and forth, and we've usually allowed for that.
Yes, that's correct. And maybe we should be really clear. For presentations of items, especially non-consent items, there is usually a time constraint for the presentation, the introduction and presentation itself, which might include slides, of up to 10 minutes. And then this rule of procedure, as I understand it, also pertains to any council member, whether it's the sponsor or somebody else outside of the presentation speaking. Okay, let's move on to the next slide. Okay, Rule 12. So Rule 12 shares that our city clerk manages the process for public speakers and public comments. And the proposed rules would go back to allowing comments on each agenda item as well as the ability to cede time on non-consent items. So that is something that we will be discussing as we have this discussion at our Rules and Legislation Committee meeting. And then Rule 14 sets out time limits for public speakers. And so you're all familiar that currently, under our temporary rules, speakers speak during one portion of public comment on our agenda at the beginning of the meeting, and they may have up to two minutes to speak. Under the proposed rules that we will be discussing in a couple of weeks, we'd allow for more opportunities to comment on the agenda up to a certain amount of time if speakers have signed up for multiple items. And that is similar to our rules before COVID. Rule 15 relates to the presiding officer's role regarding public speakers, and this is for council meetings, including committee meetings. So for meetings that you all would be chairing, the presiding officer may refuse the floor to any person and rule them out of order if speaking beyond their allotted time, if their remarks are not relevant to the agenda item, or if their remarks are disruptive, abusive, or constitute hate speech. And I think I said earlier that the changes or proposed changes would be underlined. Apologies, it looks like the underlining was removed in the slide deck. But what was added to Rule 15 is this phrase around remarks that can be constituted as hate speech being a potential grounds for ruling a public speaker out of order. Okay, let's keep going. Okay. Rule 16. Rule 16 lays out appointments to boards and commissions that require confirmation. We will talk a bit more about boards and commissions in the afternoon. And one thing to note in our rules is that appointments by the mayor to the Planning Commission, Port Commission, Housing Residential and Rent Relocation Board, as well as the Police Commission, those come first to our Rules and Legislation Committee rather than going directly to the council. Okay, Rule 20 is our annual recess. I'm going to give myself a break from talking. Who wants to share what our annual recess is according to our rules? This is an easy one. Councilmember Fife. You're on my screen. Do you want to share Rule 20?
No, I'm having a difficult time with my screen.
Okay, no worries. Okay. Our annual recess is August 1st through the 31st of each year or until our first meeting in September. Rule 21. This one describes actions during recess that are authorized or may be authorized by our mayor. Does anybody want to share this one? Any of you old timers familiar with this one? Raise your hand if you are.
Forgive me, through the chair, to the Council President Cicillante Simmons. What's the question?
Oh, I'm just trying to get some participation here. Okay, I do see a hand up. Councilmember Kalb, what's Rule 21?
Yeah, so this is when we're on our official recess, the City Council. The mayor, which I think is effectively the city administrator, but correct me if I'm wrong, ends up taking certain actions that they're allowed to take and then have to report those actions to us when we come back. Without, those actions under certain limitations can be done without council approval, but have to be shared with us as soon as we come back at the first council meeting, I guess, in September. And, let's see. Yeah, I believe that said. The city attorney might have more clarification, but that's my understanding.
That's correct. And I don't believe there were any changes made to this in terms of our temporary rules, and any changes in our proposed rules would be more grammatical or sort of clarifying. Okay, let's go. Oh, actually, Clerk Reed, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
I was just going to add to that, that after any actions that are taken during the summer recess are, you also approve once after the recess on the council body as well.
That's correct. And that happens at our first meeting in October. Okay, let's go on to the next slide. Okay, Rule 23. So Rule 23 lays out the jurisdiction of the Rules and Legislation Committee. So those powers include making recommendations on endorsing or opposing propositions, monitoring and recommending local, state, and federal legislative action, and submitting the annual legislative agenda to council. So we will take that up on January 26, as well as setting any special meetings of the council, standing committees, and ad hoc committees. So that's the jurisdiction of the Rules and Legislation Committee. And then Rule 4 lays out the powers of the committee. So you'll see here on this slide, it includes to assign and schedule items to a standing committee, sometimes back to the requester of the item to refine it, working with the city administrator and/or the city attorney, and then sometimes also directly sending an item to council with a specific reason that is stated on the record. Our Rules Committee also establishes our consent and our non-consent calendar. Oftentimes, items on consent have been vetted in committees, and that's really our goal. And then the non-consent items often come from our committees and are often the things that require more public input as well as more discussion and debate by the council. And then one other power of the Rules and Legislation Committee includes placing urgent items on supplemental agendas of our regular council meetings or special council meeting agendas. And that often happens if no action was taken on that item at a committee for a variety of reasons, including maybe the committee even ran out of time or the meeting was canceled. Councilmember Ramachandran.
Council President Bass, I have a question about what comes before the Rules and Legislation Committee in the first place. Which part, which body or individual is the one who brings forward to the Rules Committee all of the potential items?
Great question. We'll dive into this when we go through our legislative process. And the Rules Committee can consider an item, which could be an informational item, a piece of legislation from a variety of members, and that can include council members, the mayor, the city administrator, the city attorney, the city clerk. As you saw, the clerk brought forward the items for the election of our president and president pro tem. And members of the public may also bring items to the Rules Committee for scheduling. And there is a process that we'll walk through after our lunch break to go through that legislative process. Councilmember Kalb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a clarification question. I know during the COVID, we had a modification of our rules where anything that passes out of committee goes back to the Rules Committee to reconfirm it going to the full council. We didn't do that prior to COVID. I'm wondering what the plan is going forward.
If I could, through the chair.
Yes, please.
It's always been the Rules Committee's authority to approve things out of committee. You did that previously. It was just in a different format via the matrix. You were approving the committee's actions before they went to council.
Through the chair. I see. Okay, so we did it in a more subtle kind of pro forma way, pre-COVID. And, but, in reality, so the reality is that the rule hasn't really changed officially. Okay, I get it. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Clerk Reed. Okay, let's move on to the next page. All right, Rule 25. This is a newer rule, and Councilmember Kaplan, if you are available, I would.
Yes, yes, thank you. Yes, I did hear you volunteer me. So I will accept and thank you, Madam President, for chairing this extensive explanation. So Rule 25, High-Stakes Negotiations, was, I believe, originally written by then-Councilmember Schaaf before she became mayor to require council authorization before council members cast votes on other boards. And then I brought amendments to it last year. So let me just clarify. So council members, in addition to our service on this body, on this city council, we also have representation on a wide array of outside boards and commissions, such as the Coliseum Authority, ABAAG, which is the Association of Bay Area Governments, and many, many others, ranging from East Bay Community Energy to Stop Waste, on which we have representatives sitting who are members of this council. And so this policy requires that, prior to casting a high-stakes vote on such outside body that we would previously undertake authorization here from this body. And that, interesting, was not often adhered to and had a much lower dollar amount as the cutoff. And so we amended it last year in order to allow members of outside boards to take action to bring funding to the city of Oakland. We had a budget crisis at which we were facing closures of fire stations and other devastating cuts to public services. And we successfully found $10 million that was available from the Coliseum Authority Board to come back to Oakland to save those services. And that process needed to be agendized multiple times and go through multiple votes for us to then bring that money back to Oakland to save those services. And the amendment that I offered would allow bringing money to Oakland to not have to go through those multi-step processes so that we would be more readily able to fund our vital services. And so then that exemption is now part of the revised rule. And thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you. And again, if there's any questions or comments, go ahead and raise your hand, and we'll keep going forward until I see any hands up. Next slide, please. Okay, Rule 26. So I do want to highlight for all of us that Rule 26 is a new rule. This is a rule for the procedure for council members to place items on an agenda. So this is a proposal, and this has come about largely because we currently don't have a clear protocol and process and timeline for how we put legislation forward. This does apply not only to council members, but also to city staff, the city attorney, and the mayor, you know, any entity that is proposing to bring an item forward. So I'll review this since it's new information. And again, we'll be able to discuss this on the 19th at the Rules Committee and then at the council, once it moves forward. So council members, city staff, city attorney, and the mayor shall make all reasonable efforts to submit a new proposal for legislation to the appropriate standing committee rather than going directly to the city council. And we do expect that we plan accordingly to make that happen. In addition, council members who intend to make a motion to substantively modify legislation during a council meeting should discuss their proposed modification with city staff and/or the city attorney prior to the meeting. And this really allows us time for adequate input and advice, and in particular, making sure that when we do make amendments on the dais on the floor, that we have a sense of what the, you know, what the legal vetting should be. And then third on the slide, requests for informational reports should be minimized and consistent with a council-approved meeting calendar. So in your packet for the Rules Committee meeting on the 19th, there are a few documents to support reviewing and update to our rules. One is our council-approved meeting calendar for this year. So that comes before the council to approve, and the clerk's office will finalize that calendar, publish it, and make it public. And the key things to note is that reports are due to the city administrator four weeks before the meeting. And I think there's actually a six-week timeframe for that draft to go to the city administrator for review and approval. And then those reports also need to go to the clerk's team for agenda distribution 10 days before our regular meeting. And so that basically means that we need to plan ahead to allow time for that process of the staff producing informational reports and also making sure that we comply with the Brown Act and the Sunshine Ordinance in terms of the public's ability to review those information reports. Councilmember Ramachandran.
President Bass, is this an okay time to discuss this rule since it's proposed? Or would you rather wait for that till another time?
We'll have a robust discussion at the Rules Committee on the 19th, but I think we should have a little bit of time to have, like, you know, just immediate feedback or discussion.
Okay, it's pretty minor, so I'll save it for the Rules Committee.
You sure?
Okay, I will bring it up. In the second bullet point, the language says, talks about the word "should" discuss their proposed modification. I was wondering if we wanted to change that to "shall," so there's some requirement in having that conversation rather than it just be a guideline.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. I will note that you are an attorney, and so you would notice that particular word and its meaning. This is not verbatim what the amendments, the proposed amendments are. I believe it does say "should" in the proposed amendment. And so I appreciate you raising this now for us to think about. And then when we have the rules discussion, I do invite you to raise it there, especially if you have a proposal for what you think it should be. I think that is important in terms of our process. Thank you. Councilmember Reed.
Yes, Council President Bass, I just wanted to ask, I'm not sure if this question is appropriate for this section or our next section regarding how we inform the public of their process to bring forth an item. I'm not sure if we've highlighted that and just how we work to ensure that the public is updated timely when there are changes or modifications made. That's tended to have been a concern with some public in the past. And so I'm not sure if we want to speak to that now or the next section.
Yes, I think that would be appropriate to speak when we have the discussion on our legislative process. And so I just want to note for people who are presenting on the legislative process, if you could also make sure that we cover how members of the public bring items and also how members of the public stay engaged. Thank you for bringing that up. Thank you for bringing that. Okay, let's go to our next slide. Okay, so this is also part of Rule 26, which is proposed. So this pertains to legal and fiscal review of ordinances and resolutions. And so in the proposed rules, we're actually providing some definitions around the types of things that would come to the Rules Committee and then to committees and council. So the first is around advisory resolutions. And so there is a definition in the the draft amendments. So advisory resolutions would be things like a resolution supporting or opposing state legislation or a resolution honoring an important community member. So the proposal is that draft titles would go to the city attorney at least two full working days prior to the scheduling deadline. And then a draft of that resolution would be provided to the city attorney at least two full working days prior to the deadline for submitting that legislation to the clerk. And then for ordinances and non-advisory resolutions, this is legislation that is more complex. Drafts of drafts would go to the city attorney and administrator at least three weeks prior to scheduling to help facilitate legal and fiscal review and some some input and discussion with the person who was bringing that legislation forward. And then if the sponsor of the legislation is unable to comply with these guidelines because there's an immediate, there's a need for immediate and urgent consideration, then the notice must be given to the attorney and administrator as early as possible. And then Rules Committee would have the power and ability to schedule that item only if the committee determines, the Rules Committee determines that it should be scheduled for a specified reason that is stated on the record. So you'll see here that we're trying to, I am trying to create some guidelines for the timing for preparation and working collaboratively with the other branches of government that support the council in our legislative roles. Okay, seeing no hands, let's go to the next slide. And then the next bullet also related to Rule 26 is that sponsors of legislation shall submit a memorandum or a report that is similar in format to a template that we have for agenda reports and shall also do that no later than the deadline that the clerk has for receiving legislation. And so in our meeting packet on Legistar with this item for the 19th, there is a template for scheduling requests as well as a template for agenda reports. And then the city attorney's office has also provided templates for resolutions and ordinances. And my team will help make sure that the council and your staff all have those templates. So again, that's briefly Rule 26. Just wanted to take this time to introduce it to everyone. And of course, we'll have time for discussion and debate on the 19th at Rules Committee. Okay, and then next is Rule 28. This is an existing rule. Rule 28 is how we add or remove agenda items when we are not able to schedule through the Rules Committee. Is there anyone who wants to take a stab at explaining what this rule is? Including any of our staff, in addition to the council members.
I I can do it.
Okay, thank you.
Nobody else coming forward. So as the council president said, the Rules Committee is generally the way that agendas are approved. But if there is a desire or need to add or remove or change the title of an item and there is no intervening Rules Committee meeting at which the Rules Committee could contemplate such a change, Rule 28 creates an alternative process that requires submission of the proposed change through the agenda team to the city administrator, the council president and the Rules Committee Chair, which now are one and the same for consideration of approval and requires unanimous approval of those two or three people in order to make the add or the or change. So if if they're, for example, for this coming Tuesday agenda, there is no Rules Committee meeting tomorrow. It's been canceled because of the special city council meeting. If there were a need to bring an item forward or a desire to bring an item forward, Rule 28 would be the mechanism for that. So as Councilmember Kaplan mentioned, one thing that I have discussed with the council president, this is just as an example, is for the council to consider ratification of a local emergency proclaimed by the city administrator, since that's not been agendized and since there is no Rules Committee tomorrow, to consider adding it to the agenda, Rule 28 would be the mechanism by which that could be done, a Rule 28 approval. So in that case, I would be submitting through the agenda team a request to add it to the agenda. And then that request would be subject to approval by those two or three individuals, city administrator, council president and Rules Committee Chair.
Thank you. Thanks for the example as well. Okay, let's go on. We just have a couple more slides here. Go to the next one, please. Okay, Rule 29. So Measure X further defines how tie-breaking votes would happen by the mayor. Oh, Councilmember Kalb, you've got your hand up. Why don't you explain this as the lead author of Measure X?
Sure, but I I'm happy to do that. I wanted to go back to the last
Okay.
The last one. As you know, and this didn't happen just during COVID, it happened, you know, for years and years. A lot of times, more than often than people would have expected, Rules Committee got canceled because of a lack of a quorum. People, you know, people, whatever reasons. And we, pre-COVID, we, I and others floated an idea, this was probably, must have been four years ago, of the possibility of allowing the council president in order to achieve a quorum, to temporarily appoint another council member, one of the council members who are not on the Rules Committee officially, to join the Rules Committee for that day for the purpose of scheduling items, you know, not the substantive items, but the scheduling items. And I still like that idea. And I believe if the if the replacement council member is appointed temporarily by the council president and it's only for the scheduling items and not for any substance substantive items, I don't think that there's any Brown Act concern there. So anyway, that's something to consider. We could talk about the 19th, but it might reduce the number of times or eliminate the number of times that Rules Committee gets canceled. So it's a thought.
Thank you for sharing that.
And I'm happy to go to the tiebreaker. Yeah, I think you heard the city, the Chief Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Richardson, discussed this already for for decades now, or at least probably more than 20 years or so, there was a in the charter, it said that council, the mayor can break a tie if the vote is evenly divided and which that was the intent of there's a tie vote and the mayor will can, if he or she chooses to break a tie. And the what was not thought about when that was first put in the charter, I think it was by Jerry Brown and voters, that if someone abstained, then there's no, essentially, there's no tie. And so what happened very frequently, not frequently, but occasionally, somebody would abstain for the purpose of not allowing the mayor, whoever the mayor may be, to break a tie. So we changed that in Measure X and now there won't be any loophole in, and so the intent of the original charter provision will now be even more in reality. And so this basically says what the charter says now. For the purposes of determining the eligibility for a tiebreaker by the mayor, tiebreaking vote by the mayor, an abstention or an absence shall be counted as a no vote just for the for the for counting the tie-breaking eligibility. A legally required recusal would not count as a no vote and just be what it is today.
Thank you. And then Rule 30 is the same. Contracts must be approved by resolution or ordinances, so those do come to the council if they are above a certain amount, because the city administrator can approve contracts up to a certain amount. Does anybody know what that amount is? Pop quiz. If not, I will ask our city administrator. Go ahead.
$250,000.
Okay, $250,000.
That is actually, let me clarify, it's $250,000 provided that the the competitive process that is required in the municipal code has been followed. If there is a waiver to that process, such as a sole source contract, then the limit on the city administrator's authority is $50,000.
Correct. Thank you. Clerk Reed and then Councilmember Kalb. Clerk Reed, did you wish to speak?
I still, through the chair, would still like to say, just in response to Councilmember Kalb's previous comments, I believe we attempted to tackle the alternate slash substitute member rules previously, and unfortunately, the Legistar system does not allow for that to work. The tie-breaking allowed by the mayor is is a different setup. The best advice I could add to that to make rules work is to try to adjust the time to accommodate the schedule of the members because we can't add, because that member would essentially be a temporary member of the committee because they wouldn't always be present. And the vote, the way the vote is set up, it does not allow us to do that. Thank you.
Okay, that's good to know. I might want to talk with you further about that, Clerk Reed. Okay, Councilmember Kalb and then Fife.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the budget question, the the contracts by the city administrator and limitations, we should also note that all those all those those dollar amounts also have to be in the budget. They can't be outside the budget, so that that's also a constraint. They have to be budgeted.
Excellent point. Councilmember Fife.
I just wanted to clarify the conditions for which the council does not have to, or it's not required for the council to vote on contracts. So I just wanted to clarify in states of emergency. What will, just if we could outline the times where council approval is not required. So maybe through the chair to the city administrator.
Yes, to the city administrator or the city attorney. I'm also going to take a quick look at our rules just to see how spelled out some of this is. City administrator?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Chapter 2.04.020 of the municipal code is where the authority of the city administrator is laid out, and I don't think I could go through it in detail, but in summary, there is authority, as I mentioned, up to $250,000. There is also authority for emergency supply and services procurement as well as professional services and consulting agreements. It also speaks to authority during council recess. I think those are the the main areas. And then, as I mentioned before, the city's emergency kind of authorities are in Chapter 8.50 of the municipal code. And that when there is a proclamation of local emergency and or ratification of local emergency, it does provide fairly broad authority to the city administrator. Just to quote requisition, requisition necessary personnel or material of city departments and agencies to acquire emergency services of employees, et cetera. So there's I guess broader authority under Chapter 8, but but under the general purchasing rules under Chapter 2.04, it does create a general emergency procurement authority for the city administrator.
And through the chair to the city administrator, is there any language that requires some kind of communication from the city administrator's office to the council members if the these emergency actions take place and impact their districts?
What's required through the chair to Councilmember Fife, what is required is that emergency contracts awarded by the city administrator presented for informational purposes to the city council. And I believe that goes for all city administrator authority contracts. I think that same rule is throughout the the code. And I believe we provide an informational report or memo each year that shares the all contracts that have been executed under the authority of the city administrator. I knew our, I know our new Director of Workplace Employment Services, where our contracts unit is currently housed, has been reviewing that to make sure that that we have been fully compliant. But so there's this general reporting. There's not any obligation in the code for the city administrator to report on a procurement emergency otherwise specifically to a council district member. It's a general requirement that any authority exercised by the city administrator is reported informationally to the city council.
And lastly, then through the chair to the city administrator, this that is also true then if the if you or whomever as a city administrator designates action to be taken by a department head, that there's still no obligation to inform the council member prior to it being published in the packet, excuse me.
I don't believe there's a legal obligation in our municipal code or charter. It's certainly good practice and one that we seek to to follow and something we could even include in the update of our communications protocol that we talked about. So it's certainly a good practice. It's something that we should do. But I don't believe there's any such requirement in our charter or municipal code.
Okay, and so thank you for that through the, well, to the chair. I I think that is something to bookmark, President Bass, that it is not required to inform the electeds for any particular district of actions taken by the city administrator's office, but it's good, it's good practice to let the council member know. So it's not a surprise when it comes to the public. I I've experienced that a couple of times over the last couple of years. And I think we could do better in our our communication. I think it would lead to more cohesive engagement and communication to our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fife, for raising that. And yes, I'm going to bookmark this for both the communications protocol between the city administration and the council members as well as as we look at the proposed Rule 26 and how legislation moves forward, because legislation brought by the administration could potentially also have a few more protocols in terms of informing and working with council members whose districts are directly impacted. Okay, we have just a couple more minutes until the recess that I had hoped to have to give us a break. And so right now, in our current rules, our code of conduct and our censure policy and procedure are addendums to the current rules of procedure. And so with the proposal that we'll discuss in a couple of weeks, we created a Rule 31 so that the code of conduct would be part of our rules and a Rule 32 so that the censure policy and procedure would also be part of our rules. I'm not going to read this out, but I do encourage all of us to read this on a regular basis because these are important points for us in terms of our code. I will only point out a couple places where I'm proposing amendments to what's currently in our rules of procedure. So if we could go to the next slide. And Rule Number Five, it's not underlined here, but the last sentence or the last part of this sentence that says including reviewing agendas. So Rule Five says to learn and study the background and purposes of important items and items of business before voting. And then the next phrase is an amendment, a potential amendment, which says including uh, which says including reviewing agendas and agenda materials and reading e-comment sufficiently in advance of meetings to allow for consultation and coordination with other council member staff, legal counsel and/or members of the public is permitted by law. And so this is a proposal um, to recognize that there's a lot of homework we have to do before our council meetings. And for any regular meeting, whether it's the council or committee, the agendas are published ten days in advance. And so it's really important, not just for us, but for our staff um, to read things, to prep. And we do have a system of e-comment so that in addition to any emails or other communications we get from the public, the public can also use our e-comment system. And we can talk more about that in the legislative process because those e-commerce are in the record. They're available to all of the council members as well as members of the public. Next slide. Okay, and then Rule, uh, I'm sorry, um, Code of Conduct point eleven. Um, so this currently says faithfully attend all sessions of the council unless unable to do so because of disability or some other compelling reason. And I'm proposing to add and inform as soon as possible the council president or committee chair when unable to attend a scheduled meeting or needing to arrive late or leave early. And I think this is just common sense. Um, it's really important for us to make sure we have quorum for our meetings and to know so in advance. And so um, as a courtesy, just making sure that you inform um, the presiding officer of that meeting if you were unable to attend, if you need to arrive late or leave early. Next slide. And then uh, point thirteen is added to, or proposed to be add to our Code of Conduct. Um, and this just helps to sort of make sure that we're legally compliant. Um, so it says to abide by federal and state law, the city charter, city legislation and city council policies. So again, our Code of Conduct, please take time to read it. Uh, next slide. And then Rule thirty-two is our Censure Policy and Procedures. Uh, there are no substantive changes to this that will be proposed when this comes before the council in a couple of weeks. Um, so please also make sure that you read this. And then the next couple of slides lay out just some bullet points of what that procedure is. Okay, and I believe this is the last slide for this section. Is that correct? Is there another slide after this?
Um, Angela Robinson Pinon through the chair, that is the last slide in this portion of the presentation.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I know that was a lot of information. Again, you know, for council members and your staff, please take time to digest our rules of procedure as well as the proposed rules. Um, I know that the city attorney's office is also available if you have questions, legal questions about interpreting these rules. Um, and are there any um, questions or comments as we wrap up this section and head into a break? Uh, Angela Robinson Pinon?